Order of the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioner Meetings for Wednesday, May 1st, 2019. And, uh, let's see, we have an invocation this morning. Uh, Dr. Dan.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. "Ade God, we love you and we know you love us." In Romans 8:28, the Bible says, "All things work together for good for those who love God." And when we think about that, God, we realize you have been with us from the day we were born to this moment, somehow connecting the dots for the good. The Scriptures say that angels envy us because we have a gift from you, which is your indwelling spirit in our hearts, the indwelling God. Let that spirit guide us today as we do the work of the county. Darling God, you gave us a dream, and the dream is you. Be with us today and every day, and save us in heaven with you when we die. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Kofia? Hunley?
Here.
Jewitt?
Here.
Wheelack?
Yes, ma'am.
Klaus?
Here.
Lapointe?
Here.
Henchel?
Here. All right. Uh, next is our approval of the minutes. Uh, we're looking at the minutes of April 17th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as mailed.
Second.
Moved by Wheelack, seconded by Hunley. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are passed. We are at first public comment. Please read the rules.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public, under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter, excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The Chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The Chairperson may, at his or her discretion, allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined germane and necessary to the discussion. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the Board. Prior to the first public comment, the Chairperson will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the Clerk in order to be recognized, and shall not address the Board until called upon by the Chairperson. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Okay. Would anyone like to make public comment this morning? Step right on up, give us your name and where you're from.
Hi, my name is Berta Mazurv, and I live at 20334 Maple Street in Lake Anne, Michigan. And I've got, um, three ideas that I would like to present before the Board. Um, and I'm going to be reading it because I just want to make sure that I don't leave anything out, so. Um, there was a recent Commission vote against a $50,000 grant that would help our community fight the opioid crisis, um, where just this past June, it was passed to accept this federal money. This is the Syringe Service Program Expansion Grant. This grant would do so much beside provide sterile syringes to users to prevent reuse of the syringes, which causes hepatitis C. Hepatitis C is very, very contagious. I'm an RN, so I know this to be true. Dried blood left on a surface touched by someone even two to three, three weeks later can be infected with hepatitis C. The sterile syringes is only 2% of what is entailed in this project. I do not understand why this Board would not take advantage of this money that is just sitting there for its use for such an important issue for our city. Why would you turn this money down when so many young people need help to turn the corner and stop this abusive behavior that is so destructive and deadly? I heard on NPR radio just last week or so that there were several children in Kingsley that died in just the last six months. Michigan is 46 out of 50 on how we handle the opioid crisis. And also to consider is the methamphetamine epidemic that is going around. This money is available through the end of September, and I implore this Board to reconsider and accept this grant of $50,000 and help put a stop to this crisis. And if you are not schooled on what all this money is for, please table this vote or whatever action can be taken, and take the time to get educated by inviting the people back who presented this information, and give them time to give you all of their facts. This money, um, helps pay for staffing, HIV and hepatitis C testing, gasoline and travel expenses, mobile units, supplies, education, syringe disposal services, and also counseling for these people that need our help, all at no cost to the county. So that's, um, that's my first idea. And the second idea I have is, um, the issue that, um, concerns me is the clearcutting of the trees at the airport. My question is, um, do, do, does the city have control over whether the airport has the sole authority now to lease the 40 acres that was cleared for commercial development? And do the people of this county have a vote or a say on, um, what goes in that, um, clearing? And then the, the third idea that I have is I don't understand why the Chairman is the one that sets the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much.
My name is Gretchen Iorio. I live at 520 North Elmwood. Many residents are asking that you reconsider your decision to vote no on the Syringe Service Program Expansion. We are asking that there be a full vote of the Board. Recently, we were celebrating the state awards given to our Health Department. They do a terrific job. They know what they are doing. The Health Department recommends this syringe program. We should listen to them. It's a matter of life and death to people. Yesterday, a number of residents attended the Airport Commission Meeting. The Committee waived attorney-client privilege and went into closed session regarding the clearcutting of the trees. Afterwards, they presented a substantial amount of documents, uh, which we will review. A number of people have asked whether Chairman Heinchel will meet with us after, if, afterwards, if we have questions. We will contact the Chairman and ask to meet after the review if there are questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I live in the city and I pay county taxes. You were represented to represent all of us, and it seems like every meeting that we come to, there is something that goes either against our health and welfare or against our environment. And I'm, I can't believe that you're not thinking long distance in the future. Um, the, what has already been stated about the syringes is so true. Our young people are the ones that are suffering. It could be one of our children, and this is so necessary to protect the health and welfare of all of us. Uh, the other thing with the trees, uh, climate crisis is happening, whether you believe it or not, and I don't know if you read the Record Eagle article on trees capturing carbon. They will take out 40% of the, the CO2 that is needed to keep our air breathable. Oceans take out the most, and they're in trouble, too, but, um, we need to be working as a community, working together on sustainability, on building resilience, on learning how to cope with the coming changes. Ask the farmers. They're seeing more insects, different planting time. We're seeing changes in bird population. We don't have to go to Florida or New York to see the seeds rising. Things are happening right here. Trees are dying. We need to be planting more. So I urge you to educate yourselves on what is happening to our earth because we all depend on it. We can't get along without it. It can get along without us, but we can't get along without it.
I'm Carol Shakra. I'm at 1863 Caspian, and I'm going to just speak briefly and in general terms about the program, um, uh, harm reduction. I had the good fortune in my career to work, uh, in the arena of prevention. Prevention's where it's at, to make things happen. And the beauty of the program is that it's in collaboration with two outstanding agencies. The collaboration amongst agencies makes the best use of the money. It, it produces, well, the mission soars with that kind of collaboration, and, uh, the services are far more expansive. Please reconsider the vote that you, you will be making in the future. Um, and to Berta's point, uh, please learn all about the, the details of how this helps people before you take that vote. And I thank you very much for reconsidering when the vote comes.
Thanks, Carol. Anybody else this morning?
Good morning. Uh, my name is Alan McCullough, and my address is 20359 Douglas Road, Interlochen. I attended the Grand Traverse Board of Commissioners meeting two weeks ago on April 17th. On that occasion, the Commission voted against allowing the GT County Health Department to use $50,000 provided by the state for use in the local addiction treatment and harm reduction program. There was quibbling about awkward wording in the state contract, leading some Commissioners to think that the County Health Department might end up distributing clean needles, even though the, the Department representative repeated several times that that has never been the Department's intent and practice. My understanding at this time is that the Syringe Service Expansion Program is handled by private drug addiction and health counseling agencies, combining their efforts with those of the GT County Health Department. The availability of clean needles serves only to reduce the spread of disease, primarily that of hepatitis C. For myself, I'm convinced that even more, more now than before, that this program is an important and effective effort in mitigating the drug addiction problems in our community. There is some reluctance toward, in opposition to that program, by law enforcement agencies. However, my impression is, is that the program is a complimentary effort to that of law enforcement officers and other first responders. There persists the idea that drug addiction should be dealt with through a shame-based stigmatizing of the addict. This unfortunate view assumes the addict can rid him or herself of the affliction through sheer willpower. This misguided, misguided effort or idea has been seen as right and proper decades ago, but since then, that thinking has generally and thankfully been falling into disrepute as smears self-righteous cruelty. Addiction is a disease and public health issue, and often a public safety issue as well, but it is not a moral shortcoming to be criminalized and dealt with punitively. The financing is not an issue of what is, of what the limited money does provide is another step in helping alleviate some of the suffering in our community and perhaps provide some hope and guidance for those it will serve. I hope that the program is allowed a future consideration by the Board, and when that occurs, that the Board will see its way to approve it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Gordy Matt?
Hi, good morning. Matthew Scheck, 9th Street, Traverse City, Michigan, taxpayer. Ever wonder where the, uh, term 97% consensus on global warming came from? I'm going to tell you something about that this morning. One of them came from, uh, Dr. John Cook of Australia's University of Queensland's scientific papers on climate change written between 1991 and 2011. Since that's a lot of papers to review, Dr. Cook asked for help. He used his outrageously biased blog, Skeptical Scientists, to recruit what he called citizen science volunteers, who inspected the papers for him, even though they were politically motivated activists who were not required to provide proof of scientific credentials. Cook actually wrote, "Before the research began, it is essential that the public understands that there is a scientific consensus on AGW," that is anthropocentric man-made global warming, proving that he was, wasn't out to discover truth, but to promote a skewed agenda. Not surprisingly, the volunteer analysts found a 97.1% consensus that humans have caused at least half of Earth's global warming. After Cook published these findings, real scientists stepped up. They examined the same 11,944 papers and found only 41 of them explicitly blaming humans. Quite a jump from 97.1 to 0.3%. Not even one paper subscribed to the idea of man-made global warming catastrophe. The researchers led by Dr. Dave, but there are other researchers led by Dr. David Legates, who wrote in Science and Education, "It is astonishing that any journal could have published a paper claiming a 97% consensus when the true consensus was well below 1%." Interestingly, more than 31,000 scientists and engineers have signed onto this, uh, a petition to Congress where they quote, "We urge the United States Government to reject the global warming agreement that was written in Kyoto, Japan in December of 97, and any other similar proposals that, the proposed limits on greenhouse gases would harm the environment, hinder the advance of science and technology, and damage the health and welfare of mankind." There is no convincing scientific evidence of, of any human man-made global warming. Also that they found that there is no convincing, uh, evidence that there is, uh, a human release of carbon dioxide, methane, or other greenhouse gases is causing or will, um, in the foreseeable future, cause any damage. Moreover, there is a substantial scientific evidence that increases in atmospheric carbon dioxide produce many beneficial effects upon the natural plant and animal environment of the Earth. Carbon dioxide is plant food, okay? Uh, it's the gas of life. Also-
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on in our agenda. Uh, next is the approval of the agenda. The Commissioners have comments on the proposed agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay.
As presented.
Motion to approve?
Support.
All right. I have a, a motion by Commissioner Klaus, a second by Commissioner Jewitt, to approve the agenda as presented. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have an agenda. Next on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. Bonnie?
The purpose of the Consent Calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one Commission motion without discussion. Any member of the Commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the Consent Calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the Consent Calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single Commission action adopting the Consent Calendar. A, receive, none. B, approvals. Number one, 2019 hauler licenses. Number two, dental service agreement amendment number 21, renewal. Number three, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Office surplus property. Number four, proclamation for 2019 National Correctional Officers and Employees Week and 2019 National Police Week. Number five, fiscal year 2019 budget amendments. Number six, 2019 first quarter financial report, budget to actual revenue and expenditures. Number seven, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Office purchase and multipurpose canine.
Okay. Would any members of the Board like to have anything removed from the Consent Calendar? Gordy?
Uh, B6.
Okay. B6, the 2019 first quarter financial report. Anybody else? All right. Any members of the public want anything removed from the Consent Calendar?
B4.
And is that it? Okay. All right. Uh, we have a motion to approve the items, uh, the Consent Calendar, with the exception of the items B4 and B6.
So moved.
Moved by Wheelack.
Support.
Seconded by Jewitt. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Wheelack?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes, and we are on to items removed from Consent Calendar. We'll start with item B4, proclamation of 2019 National Correction Officers and Employees Week and 2019 National Police Week, page 28 in your packet.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. Tom Bensley, Grand Traverse County Sheriff. First of all, I would invite all of you to the local, uh, police officer's, uh, memorial ceremony, which will be two weeks from today, May 15th, at 1:00 PM, uh, here at the governmental center campus. Secondly, um, I would like to read into the record the proclamation for National Police Week and the proclamation for National Correction Officers and Employees Week, if you don't mind.
Proceed.
To recognize National Police Week 2019, and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. That is the proclamation. Whereas, there are more than 900,000 sworn law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Grand Traverse County Sheriff's Office, and whereas, more than 60,000 assaults against police officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 17,476 injuries. Whereas, since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice. Whereas, 158 law enforcement officers were killed in the line of duty in 2018 alone. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial each spring, there are currently more than 21,910 names engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. Whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund 31st Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th in Washington, DC. And whereas, the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes this year, which takes place this year, from May 12th through the 18th. And whereas, May 15th is dedicated as National Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Therefore, be it resolved that the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners formally designates May 12th through 18th, 2019, as Police Week in Grand Traverse County, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And this is made, uh, even more poignant by the fact that 21 years ago, not two blocks from this building, Sergeant Dennis Finch of the Traverse City Police Department was killed in the line of duty. The proclamation for National Corrections Officers and Employees Week 2019. On May 4th, 1984, President Ronald Reagan signed proclamation 5187, creating National Correctional Officers Week, therefore, to recognize National Correctional Officer and Employees Week 2019, and to honor the service of those correctional officers and employees who gave the ultimate sacrifice to the corrections field. Whereas, correctional officers are trained law enforcement professionals dedicated to maintaining secure correctional facilities and ensuring the public safety. And whereas, correctional officers and employees are responsible for the custody, care, and reform of thousands of offenders every year, as well as the maintenance of safe and secure facilities. And whereas, correctional officers work in very demanding and stressful conditions, face many challenges, and put their lives at risk every day. Correctional officers and employees are some of the most resourceful, capable, committed, patient, and persistent professionals in criminal justice and in our nation. And whereas, correctional officers and employees serve admirably in many different capacities, including jail administration, wardens, chaplains, nurses, supervisors, managers, and directors. And whereas, correctional officers and employees teach, train, mentor, counsel, and treat thousands of offenders. Correctional officers and employees provide offenders with direction, hope, and a new focus while preparing them for reentry and life outside of corrections. And whereas, correctional officers and employees rise to meet most any challenge and serve this honorable profession nobly and admirably. And now, therefore be it resolved that the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners formally designates May 5th through 11th, 2019, as Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Grand Traverse County, and publicly salutes the service of correctional officers and employees in our community and in communities across the nation. And I think it's very important to recognize the correctional officers, especially here, um, that work for the Grand Traverse County Sheriff's Office, because so many times, they are not recognized for what they do. It's kind of the forgotten half of our office. You will see countless, um, um, reports in the newspaper and on the television about what our law enforcement people are doing. But just as importantly, the corrections officers also have a duty, responsibility, and they perform that under very difficult conditions, dealing with very difficult people on a daily basis. So I wanted to make sure that the correctional officers receive the credit and recognition that they deserve alongside the law enforcement officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners establish the proclamation of both National Corrections Officers Week and National Police Week for 2019.
Support.
Okay. Moved by Wheelack, supported by Jewitt. Any discussion?
I'll just, uh, comment. I, I made a comment, uh, several meetings ago after our tour of the county jail, and uh, I really second your comment about the correctional officers not getting the credit they deserve. We also took a tour of the Wexford Jail, and, uh, as you said, they're working in a very, very delicate, very, very difficult and stressful environment their entire shift. So I, I can appreciate now, after taking the tour, um, what you, all your comments concerning the correctional officers.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are on to item-
Mr. Chairman, is there more public comment?
No, there's not. Uh, we are on item B6, which is the 2019 first quarter financial report, budget to actual revenue and expenditures, page 34 in your packet. Commissioner Lapointe.
I just have a couple of questions. Perhaps Dean can answer them.
Um, in going through this on the second page on, um, uh, expenses, general fund by the various departments, um, under public safety, we have a Department Central Dispatch, which has its own fund, and I'm just curious, as to the $275,000 budget for expenses there that they haven't expended, why is it there versus in their own fund?
That's an appropriation from the general fund to that separate fund that-
The central dispatch nine-one-one is a separate fund. The revenue sources don't fully fund the cost of the operation. So it requires a general fund appropriation to keep that fund whole. That appropriation is not made to that fund until the end of the year, when we know how much is necessary to make that fund hit a break-even point.
Okay, so we shouldn't see any movement on that till?
Not until your last report for the year.
And the other question I've got is, well, on central dispatch, they're already at forty... This is the quarterly report. You'd expect it to see around twenty-five percent. And they're already at forty-two percent?
That is correct. The reason for that, there is a lease payment for the equipment that was purchased through the increase in the surcharge a few years back. That payment is a little over six hundred thousand, and that's included in the first quarter in total. So you are correct. If everything was ratably expended over the year, they would be at about twenty, twenty-three percent. But with that six hundred thousand dollar payment, that throws that percentage up significantly higher.
Okay.
They are within budget, though in no variances are anticipated at this time in any of the departments or the funds.
Okay. Last question, and I may have talked to you about this before. Information technology is its own fund, and it provides a service across all of the various departments and various funds, et cetera, just like H R, just like finance. Just out of curiosity, why is information technology a separate, handles a separate fund?
We have, well, since I've been here, which is, goes all the way back to May of nineteen ninety, it has always been a separate fund. One of the reasons, I think the primary reason would be the fact that we also provide services to the city of Traverse City and some other entities as well. The Uniform Chart of Accounts that's prescribed by Treasury and the state of Michigan says that when you have a type of fund that's going to be on a cost recovery basis, which is the focus of that fund, it's set up as an internal service fund. And therefore, it's in its own fund, and we cost-recover those expenditures through the user fees. It's not on the list that's on page thirty-six because it's in a separate fund, Fund Six Thirty-Six, and that fund is not required by state law to have a budget. We do create a budget for that fund. It's not a governmental fund. But yes, it's costed back through all of the funds that are county, as well as those outside agencies.
So do we see where they stand on their budget then?
If you want to, I can include it. I mean, I can include all of the funds on a report.
Well, it's a significant fund in terms of dollars. I guess I'd just like to see where they.
I will add it. We manage that along with the I T director. If there were a problem with the fund, I would bring that back to you, but I can add it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hundley?
Or did you have it? On page thirty-five of the packet, it's the revenue report. There are just a couple of items that are, you know, significantly different from last year. So I was just going to ask about them since we have it off the consent calendar. The local unit contributions are about double what they were last year. And it's probably a timing thing, but I just figured I'd ask. Well, actually, I don't even know what it, what might cause the difference, but.
That's a good question. Prior year, the fiscal year eighteen amount, eighteen through the first quarter, three-thirty-one, only included one-quarter billings under our grants with our community policing. In two thousand and nineteen, we've included the second-quarter grant.
Okay.
Our second-quarter billings are included.
Got it. And charges for services were fifty thousand. It wasn't a huge change. But that and interest and rents were also pretty significantly up, so.
The charges for services, I'm seeing increased revenue recovery, cost recovery in the court, primarily district court, through three months this year compared to last year, as well as our county clerk. Interest in rents, the increase is primarily due to our interest rates over the latter part of two thousand and eighteen are increasing. For a long time, we weren't able to realize hardly any return on our excess cash. But now we're a little over two percent on average, so. And that is, that's not a difference in rent. That is a difference in interest revenue.
Okay, right. And I think the only other question I have is just a presentation thing. On page thirty-seven of the packet, it's the general fund is the heading. Transfers is kind of the tail end of the appropriations. The bottom line is projected surplus or deficit, and I think it's not really projected deficit. I mean, it just seems weird because it seems like what we're really looking at is just the current deficit as opposed to what we're expecting at the year-end, right?
That is correct. We should change that terminology. It's based on just what you're seeing, you know, through three months. And unfortunately, your main revenue source, the tax revenue, is not collected until July.
July, right, yeah, totally, okay.
So yeah, the numbers will run a deficit due to that fact for the first six months.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Do we have a motion to approve 2019 First Quarter Financial Report?
So moved.
Moved by Hundley.
Second.
Seconded by Jewett. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good. We are on item nine A now. This is the Administration A one, Letter of Approval for Application of Special Use Permit, page forty-one in the packet. Mr. Alger.
Good morning Commissioners. We received a request from Birdco. They have an interest in developing the northeast corner of the P U D, located immediately adjacent to our Public Services Building on Lefraneer. That is part of a planned urban development and has been for quite some time. In order to be able to submit their special permit request, they have to have the owners, excuse me, fifty percent of the owners agree that the change of use would not be impacting adversely to our intent or our consideration of that use. The intended use is that of a senior living center. If you are familiar with that area, there's already a senior living center in the area. Actually, there are two. And personally, I think that's a pretty decent use for that parcel. So I would like approval to submit that letter to the Garfield Township Planner. I did speak with Mr. Psyke. Mr. Psyke is in agreement with the evaluation that because of the length of time that that parcel has been vacant, its proximity to South Airport Road, and its proximity to the three other service providers that are similar, he thought that it would be an appropriate use.
So I went and visited this property. This, if you're standing in the parking lot of our office on Lefraneer, the codes office, and you look to the north, you see a field, and right beyond that is a big electrical transfer station. It's really unsightly. This building will go between our facility and that unsightly. So I think I agree to sound like a great thing and.
The, sorry.
Go ahead.
The original use in the PUD was intended to be some kind of commercial?
It was. It was intended to be local business, and local business was lightly defined. In your packet, I provided you on page forty-five, there is a brief description of what was included in the original PUD. Those businesses were lightly, retail food establishments, retail establishments, personal service establishments. So I, when you look at those uses, I don't think that the senior living center concept or proposed use greatly varies from that general description.
Commissioner Klaus?
Who's the other fifty percent owners? I mean, is Grand Traverse County fifty percent?
Yes, and there's also a, I believe there's a condominium project to the east of this parcel that is also our owner.
Have they bought onto it?
I don't know the answer to that, no. This is only the first step. This is, the letter is required for the submission of the application. The Garfield Township is going to continue review and put them through a process before they are permitted for this use.
Commissioner Wheelock?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we send a letter of support for the special land use permit for the development on Lefraneer adjacent to the county health department and public services complex that we own on Lefraneer Drive.
Okay. Support. Moved by Wheelock, supported by Klaus. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're on item nine A two, Adoption of Policies Related to Community Development Block Grant Subrecipient Agreement, page forty-seven in your packet.
Sarah Christensen from Venture North is here as well, so I'd like to ask her to approach if possible. A couple of meetings ago, you approved the updated agreement with Venture North for the community development block grant funds. And part of that process was, the county was not in compliance with some of their policies. We actually didn't have policies related to some of these items. So we had to go through a process of creating or amending the policies that we do have to become in compliance with the M E D C requirements of that C D B G fund. So we worked with Sarah and Laura Galberath to get the language correct on the existing policies and creation of the policies that we have not had. Those policies were the residential anti-displacement relocation plan, the fair housing policy, and the grievance procedure policy. Mr. Forsyth prepared these items and worked with Sarah. So if you have any additional comments, Sarah, I'd appreciate that.
I don't have any additional comments.
Commissioner questions? Commissioner Wheelock?
I think this is simply a matter that as M E D C evolves or steps backwards depending on which way we look at it, you know, they become very wordy in their requirements. And, you know, our policies simply, you know, haven't kept up with that. You know, we, Grand Traverse County as an entity has not been extremely active ourselves in the utilization of these community development grants. And I think, you know, this move moving forward to try to get this done and provide a service to our community is very beneficial. So I would move to approve the three drafted policies in regard to housing rehabilitation grievance policies, the fair housing policy, and the anti-displacement relocation plan.
Okay. Moved by Wheelock.
Support.
Seconded by Hundley. Commissioner discussion? Commissioner Klaus?
When this was approved at an earlier meeting, I brought up Freedom Leaders for being somebody that could work with the funds. And it was determined that it takes time for these residential clients to be able to get the funding so that they can pay this back at a point when they sell their house, or if they don't, it's money that just stays in the home. So I was under the impression that it was strictly a residential, single-family home activity. Now it looks like it could be a multifamily activity. Is that correct?
I think you may be misunderstanding a topic. Nate, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, this, I think you're maybe referring to the M I S T A grants to the M E D C. This is the M E D C Community Development Block Grant for economic development that goes to gap funding for the business ventures like Food for Thought, things of that nature. The policy is required by the state that if one of our economic development initiatives displaces, as an example, a resident, that we have to have a plan for that.
Right.
This is not a housing, a housing investment opportunity. That would be through M I S T A. This is actually for Ventures North for the economic development aspect of the M E D C.
Okay.
So the residences, residents will not be repaying these loans. These are.
I thought the, did you say the Outland Lake Township? The Food, did you just say Food?
Food for Thought, yes.
Wasn't that a Brownfield Plan?
Yes. It was a Brownfield Plan, but I believe it also had some community development block grant implications.
We have two, two different types of community development block grants. We have the funds that Venture North, through the agreements that you passed recently, handle and manage, and these policies are related to that block grant. And then we have the housing block grant, which, you're right, Commissioner Klaus, we're working with the Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency now to use those funds for residents within the county where we can do that. These policies are, although they may be necessary for that block grant as well, that's not the grant that we're referring to here. This is the economic development piece.
I empathize with Commissioner Klaus because that's kind of where my head was too, was that grant was more in my head, and that's the one I was thinking, and I was trying to wrap my head around, why, how does this impact that? But the economic development grant for Venture North, could you remind us a little bit more? We have passed it, obviously. It was a good, it was a good plan because we, in our infinite wisdom, passed it. But if you could remind us, because I think this, my only other comment was, all these policies I actually thought looked great. I mean, as reading through them, I'm glad that we would have them now if we pass them. But not, I mean, I wasn't involved in the development. I was kind of curious what the provenance of them was, where they came from, and, you know, what we're hanging our hat on, on these, other than I like them generally, so.
So the subrecipient agreement that you just signed recently has to do with our, the revolving loan fund that we administer on behalf of the county. And that money is community development block grant funds, so federal funds that came from HUD originally. So that's the origin of these policies that they want in place. HUD is there to protect our low and moderate income population. And so they, whenever their funds are being used in a project or to support a business, they want to make sure that the entity that the money is flowing through, which is the county, that the county has these protections in place for those sensitive populations.
This, this subrecipient agreement has been in place for quite a while. The name changed from, I can't remember what the name was previously.
It was the Chamber, and then it became, now we're with Ventures North.
Venture North. So we had, we did have questions about these policies because we haven't had them previously. So when this came up, we worked with Greg?
Greg West from Michigan Economic Development Corporation.
Right, and we expressed some concerns about why, why would Grand Traverse County have this policy when it's actually Venture North doing the administration of the grant? The reality is because the pass-through comes through us, it is our funding, and it's a subrecipient agreement, so it's our job to make sure that Venture North is in compliance with these policies as well. So we will be, that's a new thing for us, so we will have a better understanding of what that means going forward. But we haven't had these issues in the past. There's not been any violations, so to speak, of the grant agreement or the use of the federal funds. And in an email exchange I saw from Sarah, that would be on an annual review by the M E D C that they would determine that on closing out of a grant, that we, they would determine whether or not we were in compliance.
When each loan closes out, when they fulfill their commitment, and their commitment is in the hiring of new employees, once they fulfill that commitment, we close out. We would come, you would have, you would hold a closeout public hearing, and we provide all the documentation to close that out. So we have successfully closed all of the, some of the loans. We still have some that are active. But what triggered this right now is getting everybody, all the communities in compliance now is because the Michigan Economic Development Corporation just started doing their monitoring of the files and the communities. So they started last summer by coming to Venture North's office and asking to see our files. And then in follow-up to their visit to us, they asked us to provide copies of all of the required. There's about eleven required poli- of the required, there's about eleven required policies and plans. And these are the final three to complete that. So, that's why it was triggered now. They're just getting their arms around managing this in the transition from the counties to the administrators such as Venture North.
Is this a new requirement?
That policy is a new requirement.
The policy is a new requirement, okay. Commissioner Klaus?
So, what's the total amount of money that, that Grand Traverse County has to work with at this time for projects?
Oh, well, you mean la...
That's not, that's, not that is to be paid back, but like, I'll just say cash on hand.
So, in our, in the loan fund currently, I believe there's around six hundred thousand? I think that's what we said last time we were here, and it hasn't been cut a loan since.
The original was one point four million.
So, I can't get away from displaced people
Mm-hmm.
...that would have to be placed under our, we would have to do that. Grand Traverse County would be responsible to place displaced people.
In my ten-plus years of economic development experience, and especially with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, they do not encourage a community to pursue a project that has people living in it. So that you don't risk falling into the displacement of sensitive populations.
I under, I can appreciate that. I'll go back with Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. When they started, I'm sure they didn't think that there would be funds coming from a project to help rebuild Eighth Street. I'm just looking in the future as to what are we, what are we going to be hamstringing future boards with? I mean, not that the terrace building's coming down, but, you know, looking at the terrace building, if, if the decision was to expand parking and that that had to go, there's a whole building of people that would be displaced. Not saying that that's happening, but, but again, Brownfield, they weren't assuming that we would be rebuilding roads with Brownfield funding.
So, Brownfield does not fall under the section 104D?
I understand that. I'm just saying
Okay.
...one policy, you know, one thing that a board started twenty-five years ago, I don't want to be the one starting something new that could go down that path, but that's just me. Thank you.
Commissioner Wheelock?
I think the thing we have to remember is, these are not new monies. These are, these are monies that Grand Traverse County's had for a long time. And we've, we've been very successful with our revolving loan program. The, our economic development board looked at their meeting last week or week before, I don't remember which day it was, anyway, about, we have four defaulted loans that have been out there for a long time. And trying to determine what our course of action's going to be. These companies are probably bankrupt and gone. You know, we do have, technically, we have signed documents by the principals that they're going to cover the loan. But whether or not there's any chance of getting blood out of that turn-up remains to be seen. I think the important thing is that we've been very successful with our revolving loan funds. And all of these projects, you know, even though sometimes they look really good to us, they still require MEDC approval before we can grant any of this funding. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of checks and balances to these programs. And I guess more importantly, we've been very successful with it. We've been able to make, make some significant improvements to our community with these community development block plans over the years.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Does, adopting this policy as a county, does this policy apply to anything other than the EDC grants? Would this apply to other programs, current or future?
I think it would. It is not specific to MEDC.
Okay. So, that is a concern that, you know, if, my other question, like, if we, if the county foreclosed a tax delinquent property, does this policy come into place with displacing people?
Possibly.
I think you'd have to check the, the land bank and the other documentation to that regard because we, we have foreclosed on property that people are living in.
Right.
And I, and I don't.
And we don't have a policy in place though, currently, that requires
Yeah.
...replacing displaced people.
So, if passed, my question is, if somebody doesn't pay their taxes and they lose their home after the extremely long process it takes to do that, would this policy require us to, to get them someplace to live now that we just took their house as the cover?
Mr. Henshaw, can I address that?
Please.
Okay. So, section 104D of the Housing Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four lists the federal funding programs that this applies to.
Okay.
And it only applies to projects that you're using those federal funds
Okay.
...to do. So, unless you're crossing, you have to be using, putting federal funds into whatever conversion of that residence that you're
Okay.
...referencing.
So, that's...
So, it's only about using federal funds.
And this was one of our concerns that we brought forward to Mr. West, was we don't want to be in that game.
Is this plan or policy subject to negotiation? Can we reword it?
Yes.
Let me, let me, I have, I had two questions, remember? Let me finish. Assuming all that was true, and this only applied to those activities by the facilitator of the EDC funds, could they, by their actions, commit us to something that would cost the county taxpayers money that's outside of our control? Could they make a decision that's outside of, because we gave it to them to handle? Could they make a decision that would cause us to have to expend money to be within these
So, if Venture North approved a, an economic development, and that development displaced somebody from their home, the policy says that we will do, we will do certain things to minimize the impact of just, or people that need housing. It doesn't say that we will fix the problem. It says that we will do what we can do to minimize the impact.
But I think more importantly than that, Chairman Henshaw, is there's always a public hearing before any grant or loan is put in place. And that would be the council's opportunity to ask. And usually, in the resolution, it states there is no displacement. So, we have them drafted so that it is already addressing that. So, you would know before you approved a project that's being federally funded, if there is that potential. That is always unveiled at the public hearing.
Okay. Back to commissioners, who hasn't spoke yet that wants to speak? Okay. Commissioner Hundley?
So, any of these potential projects that, that are near green light, they come back to this board to get approval? So, so we wouldn't be, I mean...
A project would not be put in place without having come because you're the applicant.
Right.
Your chairman signs the application
Okay.
...after the public hearing.
So, we couldn't be, I mean, we would be committing ourselves to it. So, that
Okay.
...I'm satisfied with that. And then, what I'm seeing, the real need for this policy is, to the extent with this money, or even in, in any other instance, I mean, having lived in New York, you know, the era when they were doing public housing projects, so they would clear-cut an entire neighborhood, I mean, trees are bad, but clear-cut the entire neighborhood. All those people were gone, and we were going to build, you know, big fancy, well, not fancy, but big housing, and a developer made money off it, but that the, all of the residents were displaced from their home, and the entire neighborhood was destroyed. So, I can see absolutely the need for a policy like this for any kind of thing like that. Yeah, I, I just...
May I step in and say something? Please.
Those are valid concerns, but I would urge just a little bit of patience
Yeah.
...in approving this. The fair housing policy that was presented, I don't have any concerns with. It's just a statement of the law we have to comply with anyways.
Yeah.
My brief review of the anti-residential displacement and relocation policy and grievance procedure policy is that we may be agreeing to things that the law does not require. And it's possible that they're just simple statements of the law as well. But I would like the chance to review those, as well as to clarify in those proposed policies that it's not applying to everything the county does, that it's specific to these CDBG grants. I think that's something that should be in there just in case it was ever challenged on some other decision of the county.
Okay. Commissioner Klaus?
Without, if we didn't approve this, is there any projects coming up that would be not approved because we didn't have this passed today?
No, there's no projects that would be affected.
Okay.
I would support, given our legal counsel, a little bit of time just to look at it.
Sure.
It's the board's pleasure.
I made the motion to approve. I guess I can withdraw the motion or I can move to table for legal review, and then bring it back at our next meeting for final adoption.
I like the idea of tableing.
I, I would, I would agree to move to table this issue for legal review before final vote at our next Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay. Moved by Wheelock?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Hundley. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you, sir.
Motion carries. I had missed tabled.
Thank you, sir.
Review. Thank you. And thank you, Kit. All right. Moving on in the agenda, we are at Administrator Performance Review by, you want to inhale this one?
Sure. By the letter of my contract that was signed back July first, we have a, you have an opportunity to review my performance by a mechanism that you choose. That requirement is a ninety day ahead of July first, and we're already there. So, the first nine months flew by quickly. So, I gave that information to Commissioner Henshaw. We, Sarah Adams in our office has given him a couple of options for your consideration. I'm okay with whatever you would like to do. The, I have the opportunity to request a closed session review of my performance. I have no interest in that. So, but I will leave that up to you, and the mechanism that you choose will be fine with me.
Okay. So, historically, in my experience, and Commissioner Wheelock certainly can weigh in, generally, we'd send, admin would send out a questionnaire to the, the board, and then we would each weigh in on a number of different factors of how we feel the job performance is going. Any, that's what I figured I'm doing, but I want to have a discussion with the board first to see what, what your pleasure is. Commissioner Wheelock?
Well, we've done it a couple of different ways, you know. We've, we've done the, you know, the old report card type thing where you get a one, two, three, or four, you know, and then, and then we get into discussion, well, last year you had a four, or a three point seven, and this year you got a three point six, so you must not be doing as good a job, you know? It's just, that, that whole thing, you know, unfortunately, I think this is more subjective than objective. So, it always becomes, it always becomes difficult to quantify, you know? And I have no problem with, with the questionnaire type thing and, you know, I always, you know, I won't, on various occasions, at times, I've had the opportunity to review those questions. I always thought it was more interesting to read the comments. But then, at the same time, I had commissioners who didn't make any comments. They just checked the box number three and moved on, you know? So, so I think, I have no problem with doing the questionnaire and the checking things. I would just encourage each of us to take the time to, to make a comment in each one of the categories so we can try to figure out what the subjective part of that ranking is. Because that's, that's the difficult piece. If, if all you do is you add up the total and you divide it by seven, it's just, it just doesn't work. It just doesn't, so.
Okay. Any other comments on the process? All right. I will get something into your email box through Chris Kramer, most likely, and just fill that out and get it back to Chris Kramer. All right. Moving on, new unfinished business. Item eleven A, Purchasing Policy fifty-three, page fifty-three. This is something I asked to be on the agenda. And that is just to look at the size of purchase that the administrator can approve. In the past, it was, I spoke with Commissioner Wheelock, I think the last one was thirty thousand. And then, during the previous administration, it was lowered to ten. Personally, I think that's a little bit low, and it brings things before this board, such as that Lark London Garden contract. Whereas, the administrator, if, if it's within his purview, he could just choose the appropriate bid based on the appropriate factors, and it's not a political issue, it just gets done in the most efficient manner. So, personally, I think the range of twenty or twenty-five would, would be a little more appropriate. There is on page fifty-five, this is a study that was done a few years back, but you can look at what some other counties have on the far right column, RFP slash board. You can see what some other counties have for their rules. It's between ten and fifty thousand dollars that their administrator is authorized to approve without a board vote. So, Commissioner LaPointe?
Is this, what do we have before us? Is this the current policy or is this proposed?
This is the current policy before us.
Because the numbers don't, if you look at
So, page fifty-four?
Yeah. It says five, for Grand Traverse, five hundred to two thousand, verbal quote. And over here, it's a thousand to four thousand nine ninety-nine. I thought this was the...
I'm not, I'm not sure where that, page fifty-five, those charts come from
Yeah, it doesn't tie to this.
They don't, they don't match our policy.
Hey, look who's here.
So, I can, I can explain that.
This is aged information, page fifty-six.
That was information compiled at the end of two thousand fifteen. At the time, the limit was ten thousand. That's a chart that John Syke put together, just comparing our policy to other counties.
Okay. When I saw, I assumed then, since it was different than that, I assumed this was the proposed. But this is in fact
Just a sample.
The current one.
Yes.
And what are, so what are you proposing, one change?
I'm just proposing that, I guess it'd be item eight, where it says ten thousand dollars and over, that would be changed to twenty or twenty-five, depending what the board feels. And, you know, it would just, it would keep meetings a little bit shorter. You know, a couple of items, like today, it was on the consent agenda, but the sheriff purchasing a canine dog. It's a budgeted item, but it's twelve thousand dollars, so it has to come before the board. If we upped that, then we'd have less things coming before the board, it'll still be, you know, budgeted items. But, kind of keep things a little bit shorter and give a little more leeway to our administrator. Commissioner Jewett?
So, then what was your thoughts on changing the other numbers above that, ten thousand and over?
I hadn't, on ten thousand and over?
Well
Or the other?
We have a thousand to forty-nine ninety-nine ninety-nine, three verbal quotes, and then five thousand, nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine.
I hadn't given any thought to changing that personally. If the board
I would change that.
You wouldn't change this? Yeah.
Well
You're gonna have to change that third tier.
The third, the third tier, we will.
You have to change the third tier.
Yeah. It'd just be to change the third tier. It would be a range of
Minimum.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right. The third and fourth tiers would have to be revised.
Yeah. So, the third tier would go to twenty thousand, and then the fourth tier would go twenty thousand plus.
That's what I was asking.
Commissioner Wheelock?
I think there's, there's two components of this policy. You know, I, I understand the logic behind allowing department heads and administrators to move forward with, with purchases. But the other component as part of this policy is the bidding requirements. And, and I think we, we have to, we can't talk about one without the other because this policy requires three written
policy requires three written quotes up to $10,000 and competitive sealed bids on anything over $10,000. So if you, if you move that number to 20 or 25, then, okay, we're not going to start taking competitive bids per se until we get to $25,000. Well, that's concerning to me because, because there's, there's that component. You know, this, the policy was $10,000 for many, many years. And then it was raised to $30,000 at the request of a couple individuals back a few years ago. One of the one of the issues with that policy were there were ongoing contracts that were entered into for consultants, whereas the individual invoices were not over $30,000. So they didn't, they, they didn't take it out for bids. And there was no reporting function back to the Board of Commissioners. And I think that reporting function is important. I don't care whether you're spending $10,000 or if you're spending $50,000. I believe whether, whether it's within the authority of the administrator or whoever, I believe that those expenditures should be reported back to the Board of Commissioners. I, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with necessarily raising the number. I want to make sure that the competitive bidding requirement is still in place. And I want to make sure that there's a reporting process back to the Board of Commissioners. You know, like I said, it, it, it became problematic for me. I don't know as it was for other commissioners, but it was very problematic to me when, when I found that we were entering into ongoing consultant contracts that became very, very expensive come the end of the year, but they were never reported to the Board of Commissioners because they were less than the $30,000 threshold that had to come to the board for approval. So I, I think there's two components that I, you know, and, and I'm not sure that I'm prepared this morning to make a decision about what that number should be. But I, I'm all about letting us try to draft something and a change, but I want to make sure that the competitive bidding component is still in there. And I absolutely require, you know, at least in my mind, require that a reporting process remains in place for expenditures. You know, I don't need to know when they go to Ace Hardware and buy a pair of batteries for a flashlight. I, I don't need to know that. But when you're entering into any sort of contracts for purchases over, I don't know, maybe the $10,000 is the right number. But anything that's, that amount or more needs to be reported back to the Board of Commissioners. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Fair enough. Commissioner Lapointe?
I've got a question. In the 5,000, currently 5,000 to approximately 10,000, three written quotes are required, correct? Then our 10,000 over competitive bid, sealed bid proposal. What's the difference between a written quote and a proposal?
So if you wanted to have something that costs less than $1,000, you could call three people. What, what, what the policy?
No, no, no. I'm talking 5,000 to 10,000, three written quotes.
I'm just trying to draw the distinction between a verbal and a written quote. So if I called somebody, if I need to call Radio Shack and I say, I need to buy a battery for a drone for $500, I can get three, I can just call people.
No, I'm, I'm going the other way. What's the difference between three written quotes between the 5,000 to 10,000? And the 10,000 over is a, is a proposal?
So just a written quote would be something like the, an online quote from a vendor for a battery? We would actually pull those three quotes together and, and prepare them
Okay.
for the administrator's review. Competitive builds bids, sealed bids or proposals, we would send out an RFQ or an RFP for patrol cars and they would send us back something that is sealed with a date to be opened.
Is that what we've been seeing all along with our approvals on things over 10,000? These have been sealed bids with RFPs?
The administrator sees them, yes.
Okay, because we don't.
You do not see those.
I mean, we just kind of see a, what appears to be a quote.
That's correct. What you would normally see in your packet would be a, a presentation of what those sealed bids included. The cost of a Ford Explorer, the cost of a Ford SUV versus the sealed bids themselves. What we get as a department head is a stack of sealed bids for patrol cars. We digest that information and present the information to the board. You don't see the bids.
I think the thing we saw on, was it Lark or whatever there was a couple of meetings ago? Was that, that was over 10, I believe that was, well, I had, come here, it was over 10,000. So you went through an RFP and sent that out formally? It was a sealed bid and all?
So if you used the dog as an example, the, the canine is a specific, a specific item that is specially trained. It comes from a specific vendor. It had, and there's a window of opportunity for us to reserve those dogs. So had we had to come back, had, had I had the opportunity a week and a half or two weeks ago to tell the sheriff, go ahead and buy the dog, we'll report it back through a presentation to the board, they could have already had that dog reserved. Instead, we had an opportunity where we would have missed that potentially, missed the ability to reserve a dog from the provider that's across, I think it's in Europe still. So that's why the leniency is, is nice to have. It's not absolutely essential, but it is nice to have. We can word this policy however we need to word it to make you comfortable.
Well, okay, just to follow up on that, I, I see the point that Sonny's making on there's the dollar, the tiered aspect of it, then there's the term. The other thing is giving you authority and so you can move quicker and have, not even go through this process and take us through this, adding the terminology or thinking, if it's in the budget, if it's already been kind of approved by the board, I would tend to give you more leeway in going forward on a higher number than if it's something that's not in the budget. Because in theory, if it's in the budget, it's something we kind of semi-approved. So I would, taking what's, the language that Sonny's looking at to give, make sure we got full coverage and doing this properly, putting some wording in there, giving you, again, more leeway if it's already been approved as a capital expenditure in the budget.
Commissioner Klaus?
With us talking about the purchase policy, if we looked at the exclusions, 5B exclusion as if it's purchased through my deal. And I would like to eliminate that as being an exclusion because if, well, we went through the radio purchases a few years ago and we settled on the Motorola radios, did not even attempt to get a comparable bid. And I, if memory's correct, I think it was around a $3 million purchase without a competitive bid. Just it was a, it was a Motorola purchase and that was it. Because Motorola falls under my deal. Wasn't happy with it then. Still not happy with it now. So if that can be eliminated.
Commissioner Wheelock?
You know, I, I think, I think the thing about this is, is if we're going to make an adjustment to this, we have to adjust both tier three and tier four.
Correct.
You know, without question. You know, and I think Gordy made a good point. The, the key component in the, in the tier three is the three written quotes. Obviously, the county issues a purchase order, but we're going to issue purchase orders for pretty much everything that we purchase anyway. But also it's in the budget, you know, because the, the one thing that we have to remember though is that we do not approve line item budgets. So because of the fact that we approve our budgets by, by budget center, department heads move stuff around in their budgets on a daily basis. So, you know, Bonnie decided she needed, you know, a, a new computer screen and she's going to purchase that. She doesn't have capital equipment in her, in her budget, but she needs the, the piece of equipment. She buys it out of her budget. I have no problem with that either. But we have to remember that we do not approve line item budgets and hopefully we never will. But I believe, you know, I, I absolutely think we are correct in the fact that there's a big difference between three written quotes and sealed bids. The, the RFP process and the sealed bid process becomes sometimes very, very complicated, you know, especially for governmental entities. And, and there are times that it's, it's valued, but there's other times that it's kind of a waste of time. You know, I, I've bid projects to some of these things that have governmental funding and those kind of things in where it requires bonding requirements and all of those kind of things, which become very complicated for a $10,000 purchase.
Can I, can I just go back to my bid? Or my, my deal, sorry, my deal. So hearing from Commissioner Klaus, you would want that removed? And I, and I, I lived through what he was talking about. I was the one who reviewed the, the bid documents, not the bid documents, the proposal, the contracts. So I certainly know what he's referring to. But there are, there are situations where, where we do get a benefit, where we do see a cost savings. So is there a way that we could maybe, instead of eliminating it, is there a way we could maybe revise it? Have you look at it? Maybe there are circumstances where my deal is the appropriate way to go.
Just, I mean, we can still get a competitive bid and still use my deal, right? I mean, it's not the.
Well, my deal, my deal is, it is a, there is a competitive bid process to that. We're just, we're just using that, their bid process to select our vendor.
So a point to that is this year, I believe, the sheriff's office went out for bids. They included a my deal price for the Dodge Chargers, but they also got bids from Bill Marsh. And the Bill Marsh bid was actually underneath what the my deal bid was. So I think that is a fair question, Commissioner Klaus, that we do these things. We can include that as a, maybe from time to time or annually or however you want to look at that, but there are times that local vendors could get underneath the my deal price.
Right, and just so long as that's part of the bid process, I guess.
The, yeah.
All right, well, I'd be comfortable with just having staff put something together based on this conversation.
Sure.
Bring it back to us to consider. Does that work for everybody or do you want?
Dean want to add something? Because I thought I seen him shuffling his chair.
Go ahead, Dean.
Well, a year ago, we made revisions to the policy. We're, we're talking about making revisions to the policy today, which I don't have a problem with that. I do have an opinion about my deal. I, I think you should be able to use it. And keep in mind that even with the, the tiered structure that's on the last page of the policy, I think ultimately you have language that the board would have the right to accept or reject any and all bids. So you do have to look at this as objectively as you can. I, I wouldn't want to just exclude my deal because we don't have a dedicated purchasing department that, that puts these together. This, this usually falls on the departments and we're all busy. None of us are purchasing agents or experts, so we, we need to have a flexible policy. And I guess the biggest frustration is the change from year to year with the, with the limits. I mean, we, we should have a policy that stands the test of time. I mean, our budgets, I, I don't know if I'm saying that right, but why are we looking at this as frequently as we do? I mean, let's, let's take the time. You're a new set of eyes looking at this. Certainly we can make changes, but I think we've just got the departments up to speed on the changes that were made last year and now we're changing it again, so. And ultimately, most of this, you know, goes through finance and, and administration anyway, so certainly not trying to keep things from you that you need to be aware of, but there is some significant benefit to my deal primarily because as Chris said, the state has already gone through a competitive bidding process. If you're a my deal vendor, whether it be for vehicles or a service, that bidding process, competitive bidding has already been done. And, and that's why we like to look at it because we can avoid having to put that proposal together and to have to review proposals that are received. So there, there is some benefit to, to looking at those vendors and for those services, so.
Isn't it also true that we can treat my ven, my deal as a vendor? We still have the opportunity to solicit local bids if we choose to.
Absolutely. And, you know, you always, you always want to look at your local vendors. They're, they're taxpayers. They have businesses here. They, they support the county in a number of different ways. And if you, if you can go local, you, you should always go local.
Commissioner Klaus?
My issue's not with my deal. My issue's with my deal being under exclusions, as in
Yeah.
you can just go to my deal. That's
That, that's a good point, yeah.
that's my issue. I believe that my deal does have a role to play, you know, and is beneficial in some instances, but when, for instance, the radios, there was no local bid. A gentleman came here to the board, presented a number significantly less for what he said was comparable. We, we don't know because it was never vetted. And it was just, we went with my deal and the Motorola, which was not, in my opinion, wasn't treating the county funds properly, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just to get my deal out of the exclusion part of it would be what I would like to see.
Okay, well, I mean, there's a couple of ways we can go with this. We could form an ad hoc committee to review the whole thing, or we could just trust staff to bring something forward for our discussion at a later time.
I, I think staff is capable of doing this. I, I'm sure that, you know, we're not talking about big changes here. You know, I think, I think addressing the exclusion of my deal is important. You know, I, you know, they, they're, they're absolutely a vendor, without question. They are a vendor, but they, they, I don't know that they need to be, you know, excluded from a bidding process. And, you know, we need to address, you know, the, the two other components that we talked about earlier, what that total number is supposed to be and distinguish between competitive bids, RFP processes, and competitive bids and the reporting process. I think, I think the, the biggest thing to me is whatever that number is, I still want to ensure that we have a reporting process in place.
Okay.
Sure.
Staff, you're good?
We could ask. Thank you.
Ready to move on? All right, let's move on. We are at second public comment. Any members of the public wish to speak at this time? Mr. Shack?
Matthew Shack, Ninth Street, Traverse City, taxpayer. Two types of law. One of them is natural law. Natural law is a set of manufacturer's directions written into the nature so that we can discover through reason how we ought to act. Man can know the use of his reason, what is in accord with his nature and therefore good. Natural law comes from God. Natural law also, basic principles of natural law, that everything has a purpose, the world has design, fulfilling this design is the greatest good. Human reason can be used to discover moral principles that are inherent within society and should be followed in order to follow the highest moral good. Natural law and political law, two types of law. These are, so let's explore both natural and political. Under natural law is based upon principles of truth inherent to creation, most likely to align with morality and sense of conscience. It's harmonized with, with, due to the knowledge and to understanding. It is universal and exists and applies everywhere in the universe. It is eternal and immutable and it exists and applies for as long as the universe exists and it cannot be changed. Ancient, it is ancient and predictable. People can plan for the future. That is all under natural law. Under political law is based upon dogmatic beliefs, constructs of the mind and the conflict with morality and a sense of conscience. Political law is compiled with, or is complied with due to fear of punishment. Political law differs with location based on whim, legislators, rules and moral relativism. Political law also changes with time based on whim of legislators, rulers and all of that. Also moral, political law can be arbitrary and unpredictable, creating unforeseen risks to peoples and plans. Man's political laws are based on, natural law are always good. Natural law, when gent, this is a quote from the Book of Romans, "When Gentiles who have not the law do by nature what the law requires, they have a law unto themselves, even though they do not have the moral law. They show what the law requires is written in their hearts." That's from the Book of Romans. Also, another quote from Cicero is, "God's law is right, is right reason when perfect Also, another quote from Cicero is, "God's law is right, is right reason when perfectly understood. It is called wisdom. When applied by government in regulating human relations, it is called justice." So, where does that leave us? Where do our rights come from? Our Declaration of Independence says, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator..."
Thanks, Matt.
"...with certain unalienable rights." Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other public comment? Seeing none.
Oh.
Well, go ahead.
I can, it's a question, and I'm not sure where to put it, so I don't know.
Well, we have commissioner reports coming up next, so why don't you start?
Well.
We got a lady in there.
Oh, did you want to speak? Come on up.
Go for it.
Sorry, I look for movement. I don't see anybody stand up. All right. Good morning.
Would have been here earlier if I would have known you were out of speed today. Okay, I'm here to talk about the harm reduction. Oh, Kelly, from East Bay Township. Here to talk about the harm reduction program that you recently voted down. You may not have realized it, but when you voted against that, you voted to increase the spread of bloodborne pathogens throughout our county. I'm willing to give you the benefit of the doubt because how would you know about the complexities and frustrations of dealing with the drug culture? But you should have postponed that vote. Your personal biases against the drug culture should not determine what programs the Health Department has available to deal with the spread of Hep C in our county. Did you know that Grand Traverse County has one of the highest rates of hepatitis C? I shouldn't have walked up the stairs. Rates of hepatitis C in the state of Michigan? And that specific bloodborne pathogen can remain contagious for over two weeks, even after the blood has dried. So, it can be something as simple as an infected person's paper cut that can remain contagious and expose hundreds of people. Now, I was a nurse for 50 years, and I took an oath to take the best care I could of my patients and to make sure if I didn't think they were getting adequate care, that I would advocate for them. So, I'm here today as an advocate for the people of Grand Traverse County because I think you have done them a great disservice. Programs like the harm reduction program have statistical evidence from all over the world that they can decrease the spread of things like hepatitis C. But another one of the factors with this is they have proven that they can decrease the number of addicts in the area because the care, counseling, and education that they get often act as a gateway to more intensive treatment. The objective here should not be to punish addicts, but to stop the spread of hepatitis C. Nobody wakes up in the morning thinking they want to be a drug addict. But take somebody like your Aunt Martha, who's been addicted to Vicodin for the last two years, ever since she had her knee replaced. Her doctor renews her prescription every month, and her insurance pays for the cost of her addiction. But then you look at the veteran who lost his leg in the service. He's suffering from PTSD. He's shooting up on the streets. He gets his med from a guy he met on the streets while he was waiting for two or three months to get into the VA clinic. Now, just because Martha gets her drugs a legal way does not mean that she is not an addict, and her doctor is her drug dealer. And just because this veteran wasn't able to get his drugs in a legal way does not make him any less worthy of compassionate care.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I ask one more thing? Please put this back on the, on the agenda so that you can get enough information that you understand the seriousness of this.
Thanks for your comments. All right, anybody else?
Yeah.
Stand up. All right, we're going to move on to commissioner reports and department reports. Commissioner Hundley, do you want to go first?
Uh, sure, and I'm, I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
The question I had was on the sheriff's office surplus property, which was on the consent agenda. I didn't take it off, but I, my only question about it was, now that we have approved this as surplus property, how do people, how does it get disposed of? How do people, if it gets auctioned off, how does anybody know about it and where to go and when?
It goes to a public auction site. The most, most of that stuff goes to a public auction site, and it is, um, done online through that site. Historically, we've done a bike sale with the city police as well. So, any surplus bikes that have been, uh, found and not recovered, we sell those locally, or have in the past.
And we'll advertise that.
That, that bike auction is advertised, yes.
Okay.
Yep, if you, if you Google Grand Traverse County Sheriff's Department auction, I think you'll find the website. I've looked at it in the past.
Okay, just wanted to get that out there, thank you. Um, and then, I guess, while I'm there, Commissioner Jewitt and I were at the most recent, um, Garfield Township, uh, meeting. Um, and large discussion was about the, um, the Silver Lake Firehouse, um, parking, uh, expanding the parking there because it's used as a, as a polling station and, uh, hooking it up to the, the park that's there with, with, uh, an ADA compliant ramp. Um, and I, I had to leave by about 7:30, so I don't know what the ultimate outcome of that. I think they were still talking about that when I left, I think.
Yeah, the, the outcome right now is for the two chiefs to get together with the individuals that work at that station to go over the proposed plan to expand the parking and make sure it's going to function correctly with emergency vehicles coming in and out there, and the public using the parking lot where there are fire burners that has fire trucks and ambulances. So, and like they mentioned there, um, every man there delayed because of a car pulling in or pulling out could mean the difference between life or death for some way, so it's, you know, a serious situation and stuff. But, um, and then to add on to that, I guess, since Garfield's brought it up, it's looking like right now that Garfield, East Bay, and Metro have a tentative agreement. There's still a little bit of language that they're trying to correct, but at least they're moving in positive direction with that and everything, so.
So, I'm, I'm good.
All right, Commissioner Wheelock, anything?
Um, I'll just parrot what, uh, Commissioner Jewitt said about Metro. I think that is a done deal. I can't see at this point anybody back, backing on it, that they've gone too far. And I think that was great. That would have been, uh, in my opinion, very disservice to the taxpayers of all three communities had they split that up. But I just can't imagine the effort they would have gone through trying to split up the resources. That would have been very difficult. Let's make a comment. Uh, I mentioned when, uh, the sheriff was here that visited three. It was Rob Henshaw, Neil Alger, and myself, visited Wexford County Jail, which is, after seeing our, we all took the tour, I believe, of the, uh, current jail. Very, very informative, and I would highly recommend that, uh, if, if the county progresses in looking at a new jail, that we, uh, communicate directly with those folks. Uh, they have a wealth of information, and I was very encouraged. They're extremely open about the, uh, the good and the bad of their new jail, and, uh, they would be excellent consultants on every step of the way as, as we would go through a process like that. So, I was, I was really impressed with the facility. Lots of warts, of oversight, uh, by whoever. That certainly could be addressed, but if you look at our jail and the environment the correction officers have to work in, um, which I think is, well, I don't want to go on public record of what I think of it, compared to the Wexford facility, it's, uh, it's night and day. So, I think there would be, if we do go forward to the new jail, I think there's opportunities, um, uh, cost reductions on the operating costs is what I've struck me. When we've been talking about a jail in the past, it's been, the focus has been, what's the cost of a new jail? And, uh, I think you have to take a hard, hard look at operating costs because that goes on forever. And I see the possibility of, uh, significant reductions in operating costs in both manpower and, uh, utilities and a number of different things in going forward, if we do go forward with the new jail. And their jail cost 13 million, now, this is just a couple of years ago, so the prices can't be that too far off the map, but it was 13 million dollars, and that included the sheriff's office. So, it's a combined facility. So, it's, uh, that was very encouraging.
Which is a lot less than the numbers we've heard.
Yeah, and again, I, I can't emphasize how open. Oftentimes, you take visits to other folks, they're guarded in what they say, but they were very, very welcoming and, uh, would, uh, I think would be willing, should we go ahead, to, uh, work with us and give us some of their insight on what they've experienced. So, very encouraging.
Yep, um, I was on that tour as well and, uh, look forward to, uh, we have a, in two weeks from today, we have our strategic planning session. I plan to bring that issue up at that time and, uh, see where the board goes, but, Sonny?
A couple of things. One, the 20-year cost of a jail, 75% of the cost is personnel cost. You know, it's, it's, it's proven fact. You know, personnel cost is your significant component. Uh, the other question I wanted to ask, Chairman Henshaw, last week you mentioned to me about the possibility of serving on the CJCC.
Yep, I was going to bring that up, uh, under my report.
That's fine.
I'll do it right now.
If, if, if you're going to do that, they have an upcoming meeting, and I.
It's tomorrow, it's at 5:15.
That was official because that is a chairman appointment. You had, you know.
Yes, so.
Appointed me to that committee, so if that's the case, I want you to make that appointment and have the board ratify that appointment as we did all of the other board appointments the first time.
So, yeah, I'd like to add Commissioner Wheelock to the CJCC. As you know, our jail captain, Ritter, has resigned from the county and, well, with him leaves decades of experience. With that in consider, with that in consideration, uh, I, I approached Commissioner Wheelock about joining the CJCC committee, so I would like to appoint him and, uh, move that this commission approves that appointment.
Second.
Okay, motion by Henshaw, second by Jewitt. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion. Thank you for your service, Commissioner Wheelock.
Thank you.
Anything else from your report?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Klaus?
The Ethics Policy Committee will be meeting, meeting May 29th at 9 o'clock on the third floor, so that'll be the, our next meeting on that.
All right, um, I got a big report, so bear with me. First thing is, uh, the Census Complete Count Committee. Mr. Alger and I met with a representative from the US Federal Government Census Bureau this last week, and, uh, Mr. Alger has agreed to head up the Complete Count Committee. We've had inquiries from the city and from some townships, uh, about that because they know this is coming, and rather than them forming a complete count committee and, you know, and, and all the 13 townships and two villages and city, if the county heads that up, we can all be part of kind of one organized effort. And the purpose of that committee is simply to get the message out that it's important for everybody to be counted because it really affects federal dollars that come back to us. It's our tax money that we want to get back from the federal government. So, uh, the whole purpose of the committee will be to promote that. And, uh, if, if no one objects, we'll just let Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Administrator Alger take the lead on that. The other, and that will, and, and that will be open to all the townships and a lot of community organizations. It's probably going to be like a couple hundred people plus on the committee. And, uh, there will be a, a meet, training session and a meeting and.
You ever, you ever try herding cats?
I'm not taking the notes.
Yeah, oh, and Bonnie did agree to be involved as well, so she could take the minutes.
Mr. Uh, Commissioner Henshaw, may I add? So, sometime, uh, between now and early June, we will identify a list of people that we would like to invite. And, uh, this gentleman, Mr. Springsteen, said he would come back in mid-June at a later scheduled training date and actually provide the training to those people who want to be on the Complete Count Committee. And he said that the, the reason it's so important is $1,900 per body counted that we could either receive or lose based on the count. So, it's, it's an important, it's an important count.
Times 10 years because the census is every 10 years.
Correct, times 10 years, that's right.
$19,000.
Yes.
All right, uh, let's see, the Parks and Rec, uh, had a special meeting to consider updates to our Civic Center master plan. CJCC meets tomorrow in this room, I believe, at 5:15 to discuss bond setting and also indigent defense. Let's see, the airport yesterday had our first Airport Governance Advisory Committee meeting, and that is the, uh, three people from Grand Traverse and three from Lelandaw, uh, and some folks from the airport getting together to look at the, uh, governance structure of the airport. So, we had a discussion of different models that different airports use. Uh, and, and the authority is the buzzword that, you know, PEEV's coming up, but that's not the only thing we're going to be looking at. But most, I think most airports, I don't remember the actual numbers, but, uh, it's very common for airports to be an authority, but there's certainly other models. We also met to discuss a ream of paper from our legal counsel. It was literally like 400 pages of, uh, description on the, uh, the tree cutting issue. And what it, what it comes down to, and I, I wanted to summarize this because it was a, it's, it's a lot to take in. And there's been some question and some confusion about was there a direct order from the FAA saying, "Cut these specific trees down," and there was not. And I apologize if I added to that confusion as I learned through this process of how that works. It's more similar to, uh, like a speed limit sign, whereas if you don't follow the speed limit, you're going to have problems. But airports are given a, a set of criteria to run their airport. And, uh, one of those things is, uh, you have to have a wildlife hazard assessment, regular intervals. So, uh, the USDA performed a wildlife hazard assessment, and they take the whole airport grounds and they make a grid. And, uh, and each grid has a label, and the specific grid, they actually monitor wildlife for like a year. So, it's, it's really elaborate study. And one of the things that assessment, I believe it was 2014, identified was the grid, which included those, uh, those trees that they said to mitigate the risk of the wildlife habitat in this group of trees. So, uh, the airport came up with a wildlife hazard mitigation plan out of that study. That plan had to be approved by the FAA. It was, and what that plan included was removing those thick, uh, trees. And that's, you know, in a nutshell, that's how it all rolls together. I mean, there, you can go into a whole lot more detail than that, as far as you want. There's hundreds of pages of detail, but, uh, that, that's what it comes down to. It wasn't like, "You shall do this." It was, "This is the criteria." And I looked up some of the books myself, and it does say that groups of trees should be removed. So, Commissioner Jewitt, you have a question on that?
Yeah, just in regards to that, who profits off the logs that were harvested off that?
The airport used that to offset the cost of removing the trees. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but I can get them for you if you're interested. What I'm told is that those dollars couldn't go anywhere but to the airport because it's called fund diversion, and the FAA basically says, "Nobody can profit off an airport." You know, so we, if, you know, if they had a big surplus, that money has to go towards airport stuff. It can't come to the county, uh, Grand Traverse or Lelandaw. It has to go to the airport stuff.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, so, which raises an interesting question for another day, but, but the airport has a lease that covers an amount of property. And so, that amount of property, in theory, exists for the airport to do its business. So, to the extent that we're now getting rid of things because, um, they're not needed, or we're going to lease it perhaps for other things that aren't related to the, the question arises, is there a way of probably, I won't say, I won't make any assumptions. Is there, the thing that it seems like should happen is the county should have control over property that is getting leased for, or whoever owns the property. It should, the airport should have specifically the property that they need for the airport, and if there's other stuff that's getting rented or clear cut and the profits or proceeds are going else, or to the airport, that's only because that land is still within the airport. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so what I, what I've been learning is there's, imagine government saying words, but there is a very fine line, uh, between a, an aeronautical, uh, purpose and an aeronautical use. So, for example, Costco is not an aeronautical use, but because funds from the rent go to the airport, it's considered an aeronautical purpose. Therefore, it falls under the FAA regulations.
Because the funds go to it.
Because the, the, the purpose is that it offsets the expenses of an airport.
Right.
And, and as I've looked at.
Because the alternative seems to be, I mean, because I definitely hear that we're in good position because we don't have to pay for our airport. The flip side to that is if, I think I made the comment sometime, like, if you give anybody enough land and they can rent it out, well, then I don't have to pay money for that, but I'm also not making the active decision about what to do. for that, but I'm also not making the active decision about what to do with the money, right? They're, they're renting it out. And it just seems like it would be more appropriate for us if we own the land. I think we own it shared, and it's a mess, but that, it, it seems more appropriate that, okay, well, if they have the land that they need, and then they need additional funds, we get, we, we'll still fund it, obviously, but, but we're getting the choice of how to do it from the--
Yeah. So, the land is 50% Grand Traverse, 50% Lelandau. And that's one of the reasons they want to look at governance, is right now, what if Grand Traverse tells them to do something, and Leland doesn't agree?
Right.
How it should be handled, there really isn't anything in place as to, you know, other than do nothing. So, that's one of the, a, a good reason to look at the governance, and, and we do have input, I mean, this, we have to agree on this with them. As far as the, if, if they change governance models, the articles of incorporation have to be approved by us, so, and that's a great point of discussion, so. Commissioner Wheelock?
I think, I think one of the things, and I haven't studied this as much as others have, I'm sure, but I, I've seen numbers, it said that the FAA identified 38 points of obstruction to the Cherry Capital Airport. I guess what I'd like to do at some point, whether it's a study session or whatever, have, have Kevin come and, you know, with a map, show me, where are these 38 points of obstruction? And then talk about a plan of how we're going to address each of those points. You know, I, I think, I think if we had that open discussion, you know, and, and some of it, you know, we, we may be able to deal with, but I, I guess what I'd like to see is at least some sort of a plan of how we're going to deal with each of those points of obstruction. You know, my understanding is one of them is a water tower. Well, we're not going to tear down the water tower.
Put a light on it, yeah.
But, but, you know, we may be able to, to meet the requirements by putting additional lighting on it, and, and set forth a plan in our DPW plan, whereas if that, that tower is scheduled for replacement, that we either relocate it, or we do the in-ground type situation. But, but at least we have a plan for each of those 38 points of obstruction. And I, and I spoke with Kevin at the EDC meeting last week or so ago about that specifically, that I think, I think what we need to do is have a study session, whether it's just with us, or whether it's joint with the city, or whoever, although it is our property. So I think, I think we, we are entitled to, to that explanation, you know, whether we invite members of Leland to come too, you know, they jointly own the property, or if the presentation can be made to both us and them, if they have interest. But, but the, the key piece is that there are points of obstruction that the FAA have identified. Let's just look at a map, identify what those points of obstruction are, and talk about them individually as what we plan to do to address the concern.
Yep. And those are, those are spelled out in the plans, which, you know, granted, I'm not an expert in airports, I can read it and hope I understand it, but you're, it's a good point. It's nice to have somebody that's an expert to go through it and point out what we're looking at. Other than the airport. Oh, my list here. No, my last thing was to appoint Sonny to that committee, so I think we're good. All right. Staff, please--
Yeah, so Commissioner Henchel and I, we've talked about the MIDC program that deals with indigent defense. And I, and I didn't prepare anything, I didn't submit anything for the package, just because what I, if I did, that would triple or quadruple your packet. And I'd be more than happy to talk about this further in a, in another Board of Commissioners meeting, or even a study session, if you want to learn the ins and outs of indigent defense. But I just wanted to give you a nutshell, give you an update of what we're dealing with when it comes to MIDC. And that is, by law, the commission establishes standards, we have to follow those standards and prepare a compliance plan. In turn, there is a grant that is provided, that, that funds roughly 75-25 is the split. So they, the state will fund the bulk of the indigent defense work. So these are court-appointed attorneys that are now primarily being funded through the state. There is a local cost. Our total, total cost for this service is approximately $800,000, so we've gotten roughly $600,000 from the state to do this work. One of the issues that I've been dealing with, and perhaps Commissioner Wheelock remembers this, or Commissioner Klaus remembers this, but in October, I prepared a memo to the board when I was civil counsel, basically saying that the grant agreement that's being proposed is not fair, it doesn't comply with state law, and therefore, we may have to engage in litigation and sue the state of Michigan. Fortunately, they revised, they revised the grant agreement, we got a better grant agreement. But some of the issues, the difficulties working with the MIDC still exist today. And so MAC, together with Oakland, Kent, and Jackson County, are dealing with an issue right now that involves the MIDC further to develop further standards for determining when somebody's indigent and partially indigent. My counterpart in Oakland County, Malcolm Brown, Mr. Brown reached out to me and asked me to, to sign a letter to send to MIDC, similar to what we did back in, in the fall, saying, "By law, you have to develop these standards, you're not, it, it hurts us and our abilities to run this program as the funding unit." And so I, I intend to do that, to sign this letter that would be forwarded on to the, to the commission. And again, this is a lot of information I'm throwing at you, and I'd be happy to, to give you a more thorough presentation on the MIDC program at, at a later meeting.
All right.
Just a comment that I would make is, it's a very complex issue, like Chris talks about, you know, we, we heard probably a 45-minute presentation last October, and if my memory is correct, that's about the length it was. And I was, I was at least as confused at the end of the presentation as I was at the beginning. You know, and, but I, but I do believe that Chris is exactly right. The way it is described in the, in the plan does not, puts a financial burden on Grand Traverse County, or a potential financial burden on Grand Traverse County, and, and I'm not, I'm not prepared to accept that. You know, I, I, we have enough state mandated unfunded services, you know, that we don't need to expand any of those, and we don't have to.
Yeah. My takeaway, that I really want to be apparent to the board, is that we are expending resources in our administration office to deal with the changes the state is making, that historically wasn't handled by county administration. So, our deputy administrator is spending his time and his efforts on this topic, because the state is putting these unfunded mandates forward, and we have to comply with them. So, just be aware of that as we, you know, consider where our resources are being expended. All right. Any other staff reports?
I think Mrs. Kramer, the CJCC is tomorrow at 5:15.
15?
15.
5:15?
Yeah. She just stepped back out.
Okay. Did I have the place right? Was it here?
It's here. I don't, I don't know if the time was right.
5:15.
5:15, I think.
Yeah. Okay. Any more department reports? Okay, we'll move on. We have May 22nd at 9:00 AM, the Emergency Management for Elected Officials Workshop. And May 22nd at 11:30 AM, a study session, presentation of Go Invest Software with Ted Price. Any comments on those?
Yep.
Want to make a note that those are both at the Health Department.
And one, two weeks from today, we have our strategic planning session, finally, in this room. It will be a regular board meeting. We will keep the agenda as light as possible, so we can spend our time on strategic planning. So, get input, and if public has any inputs, this is a great time, you have two weeks to send your input on what you think the county should be focusing our energy on as far as the Board of Commissioners. Give us your input, and we'll have that discussion in two weeks. All right. And no need for a closed session. And then, we are adjourned.